When a racist principal unfairly expels sixteen year old Aaliyah Harris, he has no idea her mother is the school board president determined to uncover the truth. As secrets of corruption and discrimination come to light, a fierce battle for justice begins. With the community rallying behind them, Aaliyah and her mother take a stand that will shake the entire school system. Will courage and resilience triumph over abuse of power? Before we deep dive into this interesting story, subscribe to our channel and tell us. Where are you watching from? Share in the comments below. The bright fluorescent lights buzzed faintly in the classroom as Aaliyah Harris sat at her desk. Her brow furrowed in concentration. The faint scratch of her pencil on paper was rhythmic, almost soothing. Around her, the room was silent, except for the occasional shuffle of papers or a quiet cough. Aaliyah, a sixteen year old black girl with a sharp mind and a quiet confidence, was the picture of focus. Her long braids were pulled neatly into a ponytail, and her favorite purple sweater, worn for good luck, hugged her frame. This was her element. Creative writing was her passion, and this final exam was a chance to showcase her skills. But across the room, Principal Richard Langston stood near the doorway, his sharp blue eyes scanning the students like a hawk. Tall and broad-shouldered, Langston's presence was more menacing than reassuring. Known for his strict demeanor and bias against minority students, he had a reputation for singling out those he deemed troublemakers. As Aaliyah handed in her exam paper, she felt a surge of relief. "Thank you, Ms. Parker," she said politely to her teacher, who smiled warmly in return. Before she could leave, Langston's voice cut through the air. "Ms. Harris, a word." Aaliyah turned, confused. "Yes, sir?" Langston held up her exam paper, his expression hard. "Care to explain this?" Aaliyah blinked. "Explain what?" "This," he said, pointing to a passage in her essay. "I've seen these exact phrases in published works." "Are you seriously going to pretend you didn't copy this?" Aaliyah's heart sank. "I didn't copy anything. That's my work. I promise." Langston's sneer deepened. "Do you expect me to believe a teenager wrote this? Don't insult my intelligence, Ms. Harris." Her classmates began whispering, their curious gazes burning into her back. Aaliyah felt her cheeks flush as Langston continued. "Let's go to my office," he ordered, grabbing the paper. Langston's office was cold and clinical, the shelves lined with awards and rulebooks that seemed to mock her. Aaliyah sat stiffly in the chair across from his desk, her hands clutching her backpack strap. "Here's how this works," Langston began, leaning back in his chair. "You admit to cheating, and I might consider letting you off with a suspension. If not, I'll have no choice but to expel you for academic dishonesty." "I didn't cheat," Aaliyah said firmly, her voice trembling slightly. "I worked hard on that essay. Writing is my passion. I would never..." Langston cut her off with a dismissive wave of his hand. "Save it. I've seen your type before, always trying to game the system, always playing the victim when caught." Aaliyah's stomach churned. "My type?" she echoed, her voice barely above a whisper. Langston leaned forward, his gaze cold. "You think you're special? You're not. And in this school, we don't tolerate dishonesty." Langston stood and walked to the door, opening it wide. "You're officially expelled. Effective immediately. Collect your things and leave the premises." Aaliyah stared at him in disbelief. "You can't do this. I didn't do anything wrong." "Consider this a lesson," he said coldly. "Actions have consequences." Tears pricked her eyes as she grabbed her backpack and walked out of his office, her head spinning. The hallway felt endless, the eyes of students and teachers alike following her as she made her way to her locker. "Did she really cheat?" someone whispered. "I always thought she was a goody-two-shoes," another voice murmured. Aaliyah's hands shook as she packed her belongings. She could hear the faint sound of laughter behind her, but she refused to look back. By the time she stepped out of the school doors, the weight of humiliation was too much to bear. At home, the usually warm and inviting atmosphere felt stifling. Aaliyah sat at the kitchen table, her eyes red and puffy from crying. Her mother, Danielle, hadn't arrived yet, and the silence was deafening. Pulling out her notebook, Aaliyah flipped through pages of her writing, poems, short stories, essays, all proof of her talent. But Langston's words lingered in her mind. "Do you expect me to believe a teenager wrote this?" She slammed the notebook shut, her tears spilling over. "What's the point?" she whispered to herself. "No one believes me anyway." The sound of the front door opening broke her thoughts. Danielle stepped in, her heels clicking against the floor, her confident stride faltering when she saw her daughter's tear-streaked face. "Aaliyah?" Danielle asked, rushing to her side. "What happened?" As Aaliyah recounted the incident, her voice shaking with every word, Danielle's expression shifted from confusion to anger. By the time Aaliyah finished, Danielle's jaw was tight, her eyes blazing with determination. "We're not letting this slide," Danielle said firmly, placing a reassuring hand on Aaliyah's shoulder. "Not this time." The scene ends with Aaliyah gazing at her mother, a faint glimmer of hope returning to her eyes as Danielle's resolve sparks the beginning of their fight for justice. The school board meeting was in full swing when Danielle Harris glanced at her phone, noticing a series of missed calls from her daughter, Aaliyah. As the board's president, Danielle was used to long intense meetings where every decision carried weight, but something about the timing unsettled her. Aaliyah rarely called during school hours. "Danielle?" One of the board members interrupted her thoughts. "Are you with us?" "Apologies," she replied, setting her phone down. But her unease grew as the meeting continued. When Danielle finally returned home that evening, she found Aaliyah sitting at the kitchen table, her shoulders slumped, her face streaked with tears. Danielle froze, her heart sinking. "Aaliyah? What happened?" she asked, rushing to her daughter's side. Aaliyah looked up, her voice trembling as she recounted the events at school. "Principal Langston, he said I cheated on my exam. He, he expelled me." Danielle blinked in disbelief. "What? That doesn't make sense. Why would he accuse you of something like that?" "I don't know," Aaliyah cried, her voice cracking. "I didn't cheat, Mom. I worked so hard and he just... He wouldn't even listen." Danielle pulled Aaliyah into a comforting embrace, but her confusion quickly turned to anger. Her daughter wasn't just a model student, she was a creative, hardworking teenager who had never given anyone a reason to doubt her integrity. After Aaliyah calmed down, Danielle sat across from her at the table, her tone firm and reassuring. "Listen to me," she said, gripping Aaliyah's hands. "We're going to fix this. Langston doesn't get to treat you or anyone else like this." "But what if he doesn't back down?" Aaliyah whispered, her voice tinged with doubt. "What if no one believes me?" Danielle's expression hardened, her voice steady. "Then we make them believe you. You've worked too hard for someone like him to take this away from you. We'll fight this, together." Later that night, as Aaliyah slept, Danielle sat in her home office, surrounded by documents and her laptop. She stared at Aaliyah's school photo on her desk, the anger simmering just beneath her calm exterior. Danielle's mind drifted back to her own experiences. She remembered her early days as a young black woman entering the world of education administration, facing subtle yet persistent discrimination. There were moments when she'd been passed over for promotions despite being more qualified, and times when her voice was dismissed in board meetings. But Danielle had refused to give up. Through perseverance, hard work, and sheer determination, she'd climbed the ranks, earning her place as school board president. Those experiences had shaped her resolve to fight for fairness and equality, especially for students like Aaliyah. "This isn't just about her," Danielle muttered to herself. "It's about all the kids Langston's hurt." By morning, Danielle was a woman on a mission. She called Aaliyah into the kitchen as she prepared breakfast. "I've been thinking about this all night," Danielle said, sliding a plate of pancakes toward her daughter. "Langston didn't just make a mistake. He knew exactly what he was doing, and I'm going to prove it." Aaliyah looked up, hope flickering in her eyes. "How?" "First, I'm going to dig into his record," Danielle said. "If he's done this to you, I'm sure he's done it to others. And then, we're going to hold him accountable. He's not going to get away with this." Aaliyah nodded, her voice steadier now. "Okay. What can I do to help?" Danielle smiled, placing a hand on her daughter's shoulder. "Focus on being strong, sweetheart. Leave the rest to me." Danielle wasted no time. She began by reviewing school policies, making note of the processes Langston should have followed before expelling Aaliyah. She also reached out to a trusted parent advocate, Terrence Blake, known for his sharp eye and thorough investigations. "Langston's been at this school for years," Terrence said during a phone call. "If he's targeting minority students, I'll find it." "Thank you, Terrence," Danielle said. "I need everything you can uncover. Disciplinary records, parent complaints, anything that shows a pattern." As Danielle hung up, she felt a renewed sense of purpose. She glanced at Aaliyah, who was curled up on the couch with a notebook in hand, scribbling ideas for a "new" story. Despite the pain of the past day, Aaliyah's creativity was undimmed, a testament to her strength. Danielle vowed to channel that same strength into their fight. Langston had made a grave mistake underestimating her family, and she intended to make him pay for it. Danielle sat at her desk, her eyes scanning rows of disciplinary records spread across her laptop screen. The faint glow of the screen lit her determined expression, her fingers flying across the keyboard as she sifted through data. Across from her sat Terrence Blake, a sharp and meticulous parent advocate known for uncovering systemic injustices. "I knew something was off about Langston," Terrence said, adjusting his glasses as he reviewed a stack of printouts. "But I didn't realize the pattern ran this deep." Danielle glanced up, her tone firm. "Let's make sure we get this right. I want every detail." The numbers spoke volumes. Langston's disciplinary records showed a stark disparity. Minority students made up thirty percent of the school's population, but accounted for over seventy percent of expulsions and suspensions under his tenure. "He's targeting kids like Aaliyah," Danielle said, her voice tight with anger. "And not just her," Terrence added, pointing to a highlighted section. "Look at these reports. Expulsions for minor infractions, talking back, being late, things that should warrant a warning at most." Danielle's chest tightened as she scrolled further. Names, dates, and vague justifications leaped out at her, each representing a student who had been unfairly penalized. The more she read, the clearer it became. Langston wasn't just strict, he was discriminatory. Determined to find more evidence, Danielle and Terrence began reaching out to parents and students. The responses were overwhelming. A young boy named Jamal, barely fourteen, shared how he had been suspended for bringing a toy to school. "It wasn't even a real weapon," his mother explained, her voice shaking. "But Langston said it was threatening behavior. My son's been terrified to go back ever since." Another mother recounted how her daughter, a star athlete, was benched and nearly expelled for missing a practice due to a family emergency. Langston said she lacked commitment. "She worked so hard, and he crushed her confidence in one meeting," the woman said, tears streaming down her face. As the stories poured in, Danielle's resolve deepened. Each account painted a grim picture of Langston's misuse of power, with a clear bias against students who didn't fit his mold. Amid the heartbreaking accounts, Terrence stumbled upon an unexpected lead. "Danielle," he said, his voice tinged with urgency. "I think I found something bigger." He pulled up a series of emails obtained from a whistleblower, a former staff member who wished to remain anonymous. The emails revealed a shocking practice. Langston had been accepting bribes from wealthy parents to grant their children special privileges, from inflated grades to reduced disciplinary actions. Danielle leaned forward, her eyes narrowing as she read. "He's profiting off corruption while tearing down kids who can't defend themselves." One particularly damning exchange involved a parent thanking Langston for overlooking her son's repeated absences in exchange for a sizable donation to the school's sports program. Terrence shook his head. "This isn't just bias. This is criminal." As Danielle and Terrence pieced together the evidence, Langston began to retaliate. Teachers who had previously voiced concerns were suddenly reassigned or reprimanded. Danielle received veiled threats, anonymous calls warning her to back off. One evening as she reviewed files at home, a letter was slipped under her door. It read, "Drop this, or you'll regret it." Danielle clenched the note in her fist, her resolve hardening. "We're not stopping," she told Terrence the next morning. "If anything, this proves we're on the right track." With the evidence mounting, Danielle began compiling a comprehensive case. She organized the testimonies from parents and students, linking them to the statistical data that showed Langston's discriminatory practices. Terrence meanwhile, focused on the financial scandal, gathering records of suspicious donations and tying them to instances where Langston had overlooked infractions or inflated grades. Danielle also reached out to local activists and community leaders, sharing the evidence and rallying support. "This isn't just about my daughter," she told them during a meeting. "This is about every child who's been silenced, every family who's been hurt. We have a chance to change this system, for good." As news of the investigation spread, public interest grew. Local reporters began sniffing around the story, eager for a scoop. But Langston, desperate to protect his reputation, doubled down. He dismissed the complaints as baseless, claiming they were part of a witch hunt against him. In a public statement, he accused Danielle of using "her position to bully school staff and push an agenda." Danielle refused to be intimidated. "He's trying to discredit us because he knows we're exposing the truth," she told Terrence. But the pressure was mounting. The school board's next meeting was just weeks away, and Danielle knew Langston would use every resource at his disposal to suppress the backlash before then. Late one night, as Danielle reviewed the files yet again, her phone buzzed. It was Terrence. "I got it," he said, his voice tinged with excitement. "The final piece of the puzzle." He sent her a file, a record of a forged disciplinary report Langston had used to expel another student, complete with the original, unedited version, as proof. The document was damning, showing Langston had falsified evidence to justify his actions. Danielle leaned back in her chair, her heart pounding. "This is it," she whispered. "This is what we need to take him down." The growing whispers around Principal Richard Langston's actions were becoming harder to ignore. The school halls buzzed with speculation, and the community was beginning to take notice of Danielle Harris's quiet but deliberate investigation. Langston, however, was not a man to back down easily. He paced his office, his brow furrowed as he reviewed the growing chatter in local online forums and parent groups. "Harris thinks she can tarnish my reputation," he muttered, slamming his fist on the desk. "Not on my watch." Langston was determined to shift the narrative. If Danielle and her daughter wanted a fight, he'd make sure they were seen as the villains. Within days, anonymous stories began circulating online, painting Danielle and Aaliyah as troublemakers. One blog post accused Danielle of using her position on the school board to push a personal vendetta. Another suggested Aaliyah had a history of bending the rules, and that her expulsion was long overdue. Danielle was appalled when she read the posts. "This is slander," she said, her voice shaking with anger as she showed the articles to Terrence Blake. "Of course it is," Terrence replied, his tone calm but resolute. "But it's effective. Langston's trying to muddy the waters, so people question your integrity before you can present the truth." Despite the lies, Danielle refused to back down. "We're not letting him scare us," she said, her voice firm. "If anything, this proves he's desperate." Behind closed doors, Langston began tightening his grip on the school. He called an emergency meeting with teachers and staff, his tone icy and authoritative. "I'm aware of certain rumors circulating about me." Langston began, his eyes scanning the room. "Let me be clear. Anyone found discussing these baseless allegations, inside or outside of this school, will face disciplinary action." A hush fell over the room. Teachers exchanged uneasy glances, but no one dared to speak up. Langston leaned forward, his voice lowering to a dangerous tone. "Remember, your jobs depend on maintaining the integrity of this institution." The message was clear: loyalty to Langston, or face the consequences. While Langston tightened his grip, Danielle and Terrence worked tirelessly to uncover more evidence. Late one evening, as Terrence combed through records, he noticed something unusual in Aaliyah's disciplinary file. "Danielle," he said during a video call, his face illuminated by the screen. "I think I've found something." He shared his screen, pointing to a section of the report on Aaliyah's alleged cheating. "Look at this timestamp. The accusation was filed before the exam even ended." Danielle frowned. "How is that possible?" "It's not," Terrence replied. Langston falsified the report. He was covering for a grading error, one that would have exposed his office's negligence. The revelation hit Danielle like a lightning bolt. Langston hadn't just targeted Aaliyah, he had fabricated evidence to save his own skin. Armed with this new information, Danielle scheduled a meeting with Langston. The air was thick with tension as she entered his office, clutching a folder of evidence. Langston greeted her with his trademark smugness, leaning back in his chair. "Mrs. Harris," he said, his voice dripping with false politeness. "To what do I owe the pleasure?" Danielle placed the folder on his desk and opened it, revealing the falsified report. "Explain this," she said, her tone calm but firm. Langston's smile faltered for a moment before returning. "I don't know what you're implying," he said smoothly. "I'm not implying anything," Danielle shot back. "This is proof that you falsified my daughter's disciplinary record to cover up a mistake in your office. And if you think I'm going to let this slide, you're sorely mistaken." Langston's composure cracked. "Careful, Harris," he warned, leaning forward. "You're treading on dangerous ground. This school's reputation is on the line, and if you push too hard, you'll bring us all down." Danielle's eyes narrowed. "No, Langston. If this school's reputation is at risk, it's because of you. And I will do whatever it takes to make sure the truth comes out." Despite the evidence against him, Langston refused to acknowledge any wrongdoing. "You're overreaching," he said coldly. "No one will believe your little crusade, and even if they do, it won't matter. I've been running this school for years. You think you can change that overnight?" Danielle stood, her resolve unshaken. "I don't need to change it overnight," she replied. "But mark my words, change is coming. And when it does, you'll have no one to blame but yourself." As she left his office, Danielle felt the weight of the fight ahead. Langston was doubling down, and the stakes were higher than ever. But she knew one thing for certain: she wasn't backing down either. The school gymnasium was packed to capacity, the faint hum of anxious conversation filling the air. Rows of folding chairs were arranged neatly, but the tension among the attendees was anything but orderly. Parents, students, teachers, and local reporters had all gathered for the special school board meeting. Their faces a mix of curiosity, anger, and anticipation. Danielle Harris stood near the edge of the stage, clutching a folder filled with evidence. Beside her, Aaliyah fidgeted nervously, her normally calm demeanor betrayed by the way she twisted her hands. Danielle placed a reassuring hand on her daughter's shoulder. "You've got this," she whispered. Aaliyah nodded, though her heart raced. This was her moment to speak, not just for herself, but for everyone who had suffered under Principal Langston's regime. The school board chair, an older man with thinning gray hair, stepped up to the podium and tapped the microphone. "Thank you all for coming tonight," he began. "We are here to address recent allegations concerning Principal Langston's conduct. We ask for civility, as we hear from members of the community." As he spoke, Langston sat stiffly at a table to the side of the stage. His expression was unreadable, but his clenched jaw and narrowed eyes betrayed his discomfort. Danielle was the first to speak. She approached the microphone with measured steps, her voice calm but resolute. "Good evening," she began. "My name is Danielle Harris, and I'm here tonight as both a parent and the president of this school board. What I have to share is deeply troubling, but it's a truth that must come to light." After introducing the purpose of the meeting, Danielle stepped aside, gesturing for Aaliyah to approach the microphone. A hush fell over the room as the sixteen year old took her place at the podium. "My name is Aaliyah Harris," she began, her voice steady despite the lump in her throat. "Two weeks ago, I was accused of cheating on an exam and expelled from this school. I didn't cheat. I didn't break any rules. But Principal Langston didn't care. He made up his mind without listening to me or giving me a chance to defend myself." Aaliyah paused, glancing out at the crowd. She could see a few familiar faces, some nodding in support, others skeptical. Taking a deep breath, she continued. "This wasn't just about me. Over the past two weeks, I've learned about so many other students who faced similar treatment. Students who were punished unfairly, targeted because of who they are. That's not right. No one deserves to feel like they don't belong in their own school." The audience erupted into applause, some even standing as Aaliyah stepped back, her composure intact despite the tears welling in her eyes. Danielle hugged her briefly before returning to the podium. "Thank you, Aaliyah," Danielle said, her voice filled with pride. She turned to the crowd. "What my daughter experienced is just the tip of the iceberg. Tonight, I'm here to show you the pattern of misconduct that has gone unchecked for far too long." Danielle began presenting the evidence she and Terrence had gathered. She displayed charts showing the disproportionate disciplinary actions against minority students, citing specific examples of expulsions and suspensions for minor infractions. The crowd murmured in disbelief as the data appeared on the projector screen. "This isn't just bias," Danielle said. "This is systemic discrimination." She then revealed the financial scandal Terrence had uncovered, emails and records proving that Langston had accepted bribes from wealthy parents to manipulate grades and disciplinary outcomes. The evidence was damning, and the room fell into stunned silence. Just as Danielle was about to conclude, a voice called out from the back of the room. "I'd like to say something." All heads turned to see Ms. Valerie Chen, a veteran teacher at the school, stepping forward. She carried a thick folder under her arm, her face a mix of determination and apprehension. "Ms. Chen," the board chair said surprised. "You may proceed." Ms. Chen approached the podium and took a deep breath. "I've worked under Principal Langston for over a decade," she began. "And I've seen things that have haunted me for years. Tonight, I'm here to tell the truth." She opened her folder and began recounting incidents of Langston's misconduct, altering disciplinary records, pressuring staff to remain silent, and retaliating against those who questioned him. "I kept these records because I knew one day, someone would need proof," she said, holding up a stack of documents. "It's time for this school to be held accountable." Danielle stepped forward, taking the documents from Ms. Chen and flipping through them. The evidence aligned perfectly with her case, corroborating everything she had presented. Langston, visibly agitated, finally stood. "This is absurd," he said, his voice shaking with anger. "These are baseless accusations from people who don't understand the pressures of running a school." The crowd erupted in boos, drowning out his protests. Danielle calmly approached the microphone. "Mr. Langston," she said, her tone unwavering. "The evidence speaks for itself, and tonight, so does this community. Your actions have hurt too many people for too long." The board chair called for order, his expression grave. "Principal Langston," he said, "given the overwhelming evidence, the board will conduct a formal investigation into these allegations. Until then, you are hereby placed on administrative leave, effective immediately." The room erupted into applause and cheers, the crowd finally seeing justice take its first steps. Langston stormed out of the room, his face red with humiliation. As the meeting concluded, parents and students approached Danielle and Aaliyah, offering words of support and gratitude. Ms. Chen, now surrounded by colleagues, received hugs and thanks for her bravery. Aaliyah looked up at her mother, a small smile breaking through her exhaustion. "We did it," she whispered. Danielle placed an arm around her daughter's shoulders. "This is just the beginning," she said. "But we're stronger together." The scene ends with the crowd dispersing, a sense of hope and unity filling the air as the community rallies to bring lasting change. The ripple effects of the explosive school board meeting were immediate. By the following morning, news outlets had picked up the story, broadcasting the allegations against Principal Richard Langston across the community. Headlines like "Discrimination Allegations Rock Local High School" and "Parents Demand Action After Principal's Misconduct Exposed," dominated social media feeds. Outside the school gates, parents gathered in protest, holding signs that read "Justice For Our Kids" and "End Systemic Racism." The outrage was palpable, and the community's once muted frustrations had erupted into a united call for change. Inside his office, Langston sat alone, his face pale and his usually commanding demeanor replaced with a look of unease. The evidence presented by Danielle and Ms. Chen had left him cornered. He scrolled through his emails and voicemails, each one filled with demands for his resignation or outright condemnation of his actions. Feeling the walls closing in, Langston picked up his phone and dialed Danielle Harris. When Danielle answered, her voice was calm but guarded. "Mr. Langston," she said. "What do you want?" Langston cleared his throat, attempting to sound composed. "Mrs. Harris, I think we've both had some time to reflect on the situation. I'd like to offer a solution that benefits everyone." Danielle's tone hardened. "I'm listening." "I'll reinstate Aaliyah immediately," Langston said quickly. No questions asked. "I'll even issue a formal apology to your family, privately of course. In return, I expect you to drop this spectacle. No more meetings, no more accusations. Let's move forward." Danielle paused, her silence heavy with meaning. When she finally spoke, her voice was firm and resolute. "This isn't just about Aaliyah, Mr. Langston. This is about every student you've hurt." This is about every student you've hurt, every parent you've dismissed, and every rule you've broken. A private apology doesn't undo the damage you've caused. I won't stop until there's full accountability." Langston's voice rose in desperation. "Think about the school's reputation, Mrs. Harris. This scandal doesn't just hurt me, it hurts everyone." Danielle's reply was cutting. "No, Mr. Langston. You hurt everyone, and now it's time to face the consequences." As the formal investigation unfolded, more damning evidence came to light. Whistleblowers within the school district stepped forward, sharing documents that revealed Langston's long history of manipulating school records. Emails showed he had altered disciplinary logs to justify expelling minority students for minor infractions. Financial records revealed unaccounted donations tied to families of wealthy students, further implicating Langston in a pay-to-play scandal. Terrence Blake, the parent advocate, shared the findings with the media, ensuring public scrutiny remained high. "This isn't just a bad principle," Terrence told reporters. "This is a systemic failure that was allowed to continue for years because no one held him accountable." Under mounting pressure, Langston was forced to step down. The announcement came in the form of a curt email, sent to staff and parents. "Effective immediately, I am resigning as principal of Central High School. While I maintain that my actions were always in the best interest of the school, I believe it is time for new leadership to guide our institution forward." The statement was met with widespread anger and derision. Parents called it a hollow attempt to avoid responsibility, and the media was quick to point out the lack of remorse in Langston's words. As Langston packed up his office, he was met with glares and whispers from the few remaining staff members who hadn't already distanced themselves from him. His once proud walk through the halls was now a hurried shuffle, his head bowed to avoid the judgmental stares of the community he had betrayed. The district, eager to repair its reputation, issued a public apology to Aaliyah and the other students affected by Langston's actions. The school board pledged to implement sweeping reforms, including mandatory bias training for staff, transparent disciplinary processes, and an independent oversight committee to handle complaints. Danielle played a key role in shaping these reforms, ensuring the changes would be lasting and meaningful. "This isn't just about fixing what's broken," she said during a press conference. "It's about creating a system where every student feels valued, respected, and safe." Meanwhile, Langston faced further consequences. With the evidence of fraud and discrimination mounting, local authorities launched a criminal investigation. Charges of falsifying records, financial misconduct, and civil rights violations loomed over him, leaving his future uncertain. For Danielle and Aaliyah, the fight had been exhausting, but the victory was undeniable. Aaliyah's name was cleared, and her expulsion was officially reversed. She returned to school to a standing ovation from her classmates and teachers, her confidence bolstered by the support of her community. As Aaliyah walked into her creative writing class on her first day back, her teacher smiled warmly. "Welcome home, Aaliyah," she said. That evening, Danielle and Aaliyah sat together on their porch, watching the sunset. Aaliyah held a notebook in her lap, jotting down ideas for a new story. "Mom," she said softly. "Do you think we really made a difference?" Danielle smiled, wrapping an arm around her daughter. "I know we did. Because sometimes, standing up for what's right doesn't just change your life, it changes the world around you." The story closes with the glow of the setting sun casting a warm light over the two of them, a symbol of the hope and resilience that carried them through. The morning sunlight filtered through the windows of Central High School, casting warm rays across the hallways that had once felt cold and unwelcoming to Aaliyah Harris. Today was different. As she walked through the familiar corridors, the air buzzed with positivity. Teachers nodded at her with smiles of encouragement, and classmates greeted her warmly, some even applauding as she passed. "Welcome back, Aaliyah," said Mrs. Carter, her creative writing teacher with a warm smile. "The classroom hasn't been the same without you." Aaliyah smiled back, her confidence bolstered by the wave of support. It had been weeks since her expulsion was overturned, and the return felt like a victory, not just for her, but for everyone who had supported her journey. In the days following her reinstatement, Aaliyah threw herself back into her passions, particularly her creative writing. Her stories, once a private escape, now carried a new weight and depth, shaped by her experiences. A few weeks later, the results of a district-wide creative writing competition were announced. Aaliyah's story, a heartfelt narrative about finding strength in adversity, earned first place. The recognition wasn't just an acknowledgement of her talent, it was a testament to her resilience. At the awards ceremony, as Aaliyah accepted her trophy, she took a moment to address the crowd. "This isn't just my victory," she said, her voice steady and strong. "It's proof that when you stand up for yourself, and when others stand with you, no challenge is insurmountable." The audience erupted in applause, her words resonating with students and parents alike. Meanwhile, Danielle Harris stood at the forefront of change within the school district. Her relentless advocacy had not only brought justice for her daughter, but also sparked a broader movement for equity and transparency in the educational system. The district began rolling out new policies, including bias training for staff, transparent disciplinary procedures, and a student advocacy committee. Danielle's efforts ensured these reforms weren't just symbolic gestures but meaningful steps toward creating a fairer environment for all students. One evening, as Danielle reviewed the final drafts of the new policies, she paused to reflect on the journey. The fight had been grueling, filled with moments of doubt, frustration, and even fear. But the outcome was worth every sacrifice. Her daughter's courage and resilience had inspired her to push harder, to demand more, and to believe that change was possible. A few weeks later, Danielle and Aaliyah found themselves walking through the school hallways together. The walls were now adorned with vibrant student artwork and posters promoting inclusion and respect. The atmosphere felt lighter, more welcoming, a stark contrast to the oppressive environment Aaliyah had faced just months earlier. "You've come a long way," Danielle said, glancing at her daughter with pride. Aaliyah smiled. "We both have." As they reached the end of the hallway, Danielle paused and turned to her daughter. "Aaliyah, never let anyone silence your voice," she said, her tone firm but filled with warmth. "Your words have power, and so do you." Aaliyah nodded, her eyes shimmering with gratitude and determination. "I won't, Mom. I promise." The story closes with Danielle and Aaliyah stepping out of the school, their figures silhouetted against the bright sky. The sound of laughter and chatter from students fills the air, a reminder of the community's strength and unity. As they walked toward their car, Danielle places an arm around her daughter's shoulders. They don't need to say much, the journey they've shared speaks louder than words. Together, they've transformed pain into progress, proving that even the darkest challenges can lead to the brightest futures. If you're inspired by stories of resilience, justice, and the fight against discrimination, this is a must-watch. Witness how courage and determination can spark real change, proving that one voice can make a difference. Don't forget to like, share, and subscribe to support more stories that highlight the power of standing up for what's right. Join the conversation and help spread the message of hope and equality.